It is six o'clock. I will call the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Andrew Davis from the Fellowship Baptist Church to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Gracious Father in heaven, we're grateful to be able to come together like this. We're reminded across the world that not everybody enjoys this privilege, govern ourselves, and to arrive at decisions of our own accord. But Lord, we dare not do any of that without your wisdom. We dare not do any of that without your grace. And so I pray as we make decisions, those that we've elected to these positions, Lord, I pray that they would seek your guidance, that you give them wisdom, and, Lord, a proper perspective, and that we would all do that which honors you, that America might be the better for it. Once again, thank you for opportunity to be together tonight. May everything that's said and done tonight bring honor and glory to the Lord Jesus Christ. For it's in his name we ask these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item on the agenda, citizens' time. As always, I will call you up. You'll have three minutes. Mr. Cook will keep the time. The first person we have signed up is Mr. Grant Watson.
As a student of Fort Chiswell, I would like to thank our supervisors, Jamie Smith and Stacy Terry, for their pledged support of the Fort Chiswell Library. Additionally, I also wish for their continued involvement with the project, as well as for other supervisors to consider the allocation of funds to the library, which would allow us to provide programs for the community of Fort Chiswell and surrounding areas. One program would be focused on providing a drive-through for returning and checking out books, which allows both busy and disabled people to still utilize the benefits of the library. Another program could be created for students to tutor and help others study after school, given that the library has allocated the resources to do so. It is also worth saying that the library has organized several meetings on offering classes for seniors and opportunities for college students. Another point to make is the location of the library itself, where the proximity to the school and other businesses of Fort Chiswell makes its placement a key component in our area, all the more reason to promote community engagement. The library would also provide free Wi-Fi and computer access, where it is important to note that only a fraction of Fort Chiswell has an internet connection, leaving much of our community without the ability to complete online assignments, work, et cetera. The library would also give students extra time to do homework, study, and participate within their community through after-school activities. Our library plans to feature and promote local writers, poets, and creators in order to demonstrate our local heritage and traditions that make With County unique. The library has already hosted several book sales, yard sales, and meals to fundraise money for the project while subsequently helping the community. Although the library plans to continue these events in the future, the sole reason for these fundraisers is because of the upkeep costs that the library has to cover. Luckily, supervisors Jamie Smith and Stacy Terry offered to pay electric and water on the property, giving hope to our library contributors. If these supervisors keep their promises and act on them, the financial matters of the library would be in good hands. However, I come here to ask that all members of this board provide support to the costs of the library, whether it is simply to cover the upkeep or the mortgage that is currently being paid for by generous community donations and the aforementioned fundraisers. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Right, next person we have signed up is Ms. Kim Aker.
Good evening, board members. My name is Kim Aker. I live at one eighty-six Turley Farm Road. That's in the Fort Chiswell Voting District. My family are all lifelong With Countians. We have used the library in Withfield many, many times, and I taught in the rural retreat library. I taught adult education classes. I can't, however, check out books yet or teach at the Fort Chiswell Library because it's not operational yet. I'm new to the Friends of the Library Board, and so any information is also new to me from newspaper articles and former board members. We have a fresh new board, and we're working tirelessly to secure money for the mortgage payment, lights, and water. We've checked out one book so far, and since April, we have held monthly yard sales, dinner sales, and taken many donations as we can garner. Several individuals have donated high-priced items, and we've raffled those off so far. Several individuals have volunteered their time and worked on shelving and floors and partial counter removals so a circulation desk can be used and have access to the drive-through should people need to stay in their vehicles to pick up or return books. I didn't attend the Max Matus Head Start before attending Max Matus Elementary, but that building is at least forty-eight years old. My understanding is that you at some point wanted the Friends of the Fort Chiswell Library to operate a library there. However, a lease and almost a hundred thousand dollars has already been paid for the newer, more prominent, and much more convenient site that's directly across from Fort Chiswell High School and Middle Schools and where all the elementary schools can be bussed for access, as well as the students walking over from the middle and high school buildings. I did speak with Mr. Jamie Smith and Mr. Stacy Terry on the night of elections at the Max Matus polling site, and they both agreed that a library is needed in Fort Chiswell. They both verbally agreed that they would support a motion to pay operating costs, including the lights, water, internet, and salaries, but not the building itself. Our board is working to find ways to pay off the mortgage to this building, as we believe it is the best site for many reasons. I understand there's a lot of money on the line. I also understand that there is or was, I don't know, a political battle because of Mr. Joe Hale and that he purchased the building and he had a gentleman's understanding that he would have others of people on the board that would back him with a vote of support. Obviously, that hasn't happened, and since he passed, board members have changed. The eastern end of the county is our fastest-growing, according to the most recent census survey. It encompasses the Jackson-Ausenville area, Ivanhoe, Piney, Fort Chiswell, Bering Springs, and Max Matus areas. These citizens deserve to have easy access to a public library. We deserve that. The amount of money that would have been spent on the former Head Start building could be huge. That's why there's not a Head Start there, I believe. One of you made the comment, possibly, again, I'm going off hearsay, that kids just use their phones to read. Research has proven that that is not necessarily the case. Is that my time? Can I continue?
Is it the time? I'm sorry, I was taking notes. Ms. Aker, my suggestion would be that you contact Mr. Barrett and come and speak to our budget committee, where we can have a longer, more detailed conversation about finances. Mr. Smith, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that would be the direction. Like we talked, you know, on that Tuesday afternoon, when we went to the original meeting that was held at the Baptist Church, you know, we had said that we would help do the operational costs, just as we have with the town of Withfield or the Withfield Library and the rural retreat library. But like we talked before, you'll have to be part of that With Grayson Library.
Right.
If it's a standalone library, then you have to submit a request for a donation, which is not going to help in the direction that you want to go and the library needs to go. So that meeting, if you can get with Mr. Barrett to set that up with the budget committee, I think that would be the, we could be in the more details at that meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And if you would bring your, whatever financials you folks have, I don't, because we haven't, you know, we were approached one time.
Right.
And we were told there was multiple grants out there that, you know, apply for, and we've never heard anything since then. I even followed up with the gentleman. I've got the emails.
He's no longer a member of the board?
Yeah, I don't, you know, so there's, there's a lot of false information. We have not changed our, we want to see it succeed, but on the same level that the Withfield Library and the Retreat Libraries. So instead of putting false information on social media, let's sit down, have an honest conversation, and go from there. That's my suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would bring, if it's okay, I think it is, any of the board that you want to bring with you. I think that would be good for them to hear the same message. That way, everybody's hearing the same message, and everybody's got the same information today.
Sounds good. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, the next person we have signed up is Mr. John Diorio. Mr. Diorio?
Chairman Vought, members of the board. The Friends of the Fort Chiswell Library is undertaking, as you know, to establish a branch library in Fort Chiswell area. The With Grayson Regional Library has two branches in With, one in Withfield and a very small one in rural retreat, funded in part by the With County Board of Supervisors. We're currently trying to establish a branch in the eastern end of With County and Fort Chiswell area that would serve the fastest-growing area of the county, with the current population exceeding nine thousand. We have the opportunity to secure an ideal location for a branch in the former location of the First Community Bank. Fort Chiswell High School and Middle School are right across the road, making the location of the library convenient for after-school study or research. All the elementary schools in the area have bussing to these schools. Our hope is to establish programs for all ages, as well as offering computer internet access and access to books for all ages. I'm here to ask for this board's support any way you can in obtaining branch status for the Withfield Library, for the Fort Chiswell Library. Why am I here as a citizen of Withfield and a patron of the Withfield Branch? Since I was a child who benefited from bookmobile service from the public library, I've become a fervent supporter of public libraries. I've served three terms on the With Grayson Library Board, to as vice chair, to as chair. I've also served two terms on the Board of the Library of Virginia and a year as chair of the board. I've learned much about local library service and want to conclude my remarks with some observations about library service right here in With County. Since the establishment of the Regional Library seventy-five years ago, With County has not received the full benefit of that membership. Number one, the regional office and library was built in Independence, seventy-five years ago. I wasn't here at the time. Number one, I understand that that office was built with some funds coming from right here in With County. We received no funds to build our two branches here. That's water over the dam. When I moved here in sixty-nine, our library was in two adjoining stores, very small, in what is now Old Stage Shopping Mall on Tasle Street. It was not until the mid-seventies that the Withfield Library Board of Directors, which was really a misnomer, it was the Friends of the Library, and that's a better name, really. They had no official business. They undertook a drive to build the present library structure with funds raised in the county by private citizens and some federal funding. Presently, there are three branches in Grayson: Independence, Freeze, and White Top, two in With, as I've mentioned, Withfield and Rural Retreat. Again, no branch in the eastern part of the county. Let me give you just a small statistical breakdown. The population of Grayson, depending on when you measure it, is around fifteen thousand. In With, around twenty-eight, a little give and take. We, in With, are sixty-five percent of the population, Grayson about thirty-five. Circulation, material circulation, and I grabbed this from some, about a year ago, and this is just the material. In Independence, total fifty-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three for the month of November twenty-twenty-two. Independence, two thousand seventy-nine, thirty-five percent. Freeze, two fifty-seven, four-point-three percent. White Top, one fifty-six, two-point-six percent. Withfield, thirty-one fifty-three, fifty-three percent. Rural Retreat, two-hundred-seventy-eight, about four-point-seven-five, rounded off. In other words, with our population, sixty-four-point-seven percent, our circulation is about fifty-eight percent. We could get more for our bucks if we had a branch, a good branch, in Fort Chiswell. From what I know of libraries, that branch down there, up there, over there, could have almost the same circulation as the Withfield Branch. Time is up. Got any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir. All right, next person we have signed up is Mr. Michael Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But I want to thank all the members, county administrators, on all their effortless hours on the merge of the Rural Retreat, volunteer emergency services, everything. A lot of misinformation has been put out there, and that's why I just want to bring this forward. Your October twenty-fourth meeting, it was voted on to, I guess, dissolve the current board. So I'm really here just to see, six months from now, what the rescue squad is going to look like as far as operations and the current five oh one C three. As I understand it, and glad Scott's here, as a five oh one C three, they must also be a board, an active board, which means payroll, employees, and so forth. Also, part of that also has to have something like LLC or incorporation. So if we dissolve the current board, then that five oh one C three will have to dissolve as a whole. So I'm really just trying to hear to get a clarification, you know, what's it going to look like? Because when we read this, some of our current EMS employees were ready to quit. They said, dang, if y'all give me the board, what's going to happen to me, being on the bottom of the top pole? So we reassured them, though, this is part of the merger. So, you know, this whole thing is to, one, retain better, long-term employees, better paid benefits, paid time off, retirement, and we're all in support of it, the town, the EMS. So I'm just really to get here to get a fair clarification on the true operation going forward. I don't know who to address that to.
Mr. Hankins?
Mr. Duncan, we voted on the same thing that you did, October twenty-fourth, as the Town Council of Rural Retreat. What we arrived at is an agreement on the use of the real estate. We have yet to work through some of the details about how transfer is made. I can tell you that as far as the employees go, all employees of current, or all current EMS employees are going to be encouraged to apply for jobs with the county agency as we get that up and running. Our intent is to hire those people. EMTs are not easy to find or employ, so if we have them working in the county now, we want to continue to employ them. How, as far as the structure goes, we are advertising this week for management of that agency, and we will work, sit down and work through the details on how the transfer is made with the, not just with the Rural Retreat Agency, but also with the lead mines agency.
So how does that pertain to the five oh one?
The five oh one C threes, if there is not a purpose for them to exist in the future, they can choose to dissolve.
They would have to dissolve.
Or they can continue, they can reconfigure what their purpose is if they want to continue to fundraise in support of operations and buying equipment, buying supplies, supporting the emergency medical providers. They could continue to do that, essentially functioning like an auxiliary would for a lot of agencies now. Yes, sir.
And I think that's where the misinformation is, because when we read it, it was like the county said, no more board. And so there has to be a board in order to be the five oh one.
But the five oh one C three would operate separately from the county. So it could maintain a board, it could still do fundraising activities in support of those EMTs, but there wouldn't be the need for them to operate the rescue squad because those folks will be operating as employees of the county under direction of the county emergency medical management.
So let's just say, six months from now, we have a, I don't know, a problem employee, and it's addressed to the board, but yet that board would have no power because they're county employees. So does that make sense?
They would fall, they would fall under the personnel policy.
Right, of the county.
Of the county.
Right. So the purpose of the five oh one board would be to meet and say, hey, we're having a fundraiser.
Right. And we've talked about this as we've gone through some of, you know, the details of how this could operate. There would not be a need for that board to oversee employees. If it wants to continue to operate to do fundraising, if it wants to provide feedback to the county on, you know, the provision of services in the western end of the county, it could, you know, continue to operate that way. But we're going to have the staff as county employees, and they'll report to the county. They'll be under the county personnel policy, and so the county would be responsible for disciplining, training, providing, you know, counseling for employees. So the five oh one C three board wouldn't have to operate if it didn't see a need to do so.
So then how would, I guess, the whole EMS operations would just get absorbed underneath the county?
It would operate as a county department.
And I kind of picture like a chain of command, like being EM one and maybe a manager that would kind of oversee both lead mines and rural retreat, and then maybe an on-site supervisor?
As is included in the budget now, there would be an emergency services director who would oversee two deputies. One deputy would be for emergency management, one would be for emergency medical services. And then you would have staff below them, a captain, you know, inconsistent with Office of EMS requirements for the lead mines and the rural retreat operations. And again, those would all be, you know, county employees, subject to the county personnel policy, and have, as you pointed out, access to the benefits that they don't have now as an incentive to try to attract those employees and keep them here longer, providing services to the residents.
Any questions from you? Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. All right, last person we have signed up is Mr. Roger Hedrick.
I'm just here to support.
And Mr. Duncan, if you or Mr. Hedrick have any more questions, reach out to Mr. Hankins. It's, it's still a work in progress, so.
A long process. I wish it was already done.
Well, and I'll just say, we've had multiple discussions, and it's probably taken longer than some of us would have liked, but we really want to do it right. And you only get one chance to do it right, so. All right.
I'm going to dismiss myself. I'm going with you.
Thank you. That's all the citizens we have signed up, so our close citizens' time.
And I'm not leaving because I'm not interested in what we're talking about. My grandson has another reason I got to take.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices each board member has received. In their board package, a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice any board member wants to pull out? Right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on our agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from November the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So may.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Moving on to old business, Mr. Barrett, do we have anything under old business?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything under old business?
The only thing that we've received was a report back from VDOT on the inquiries that we had at the last meeting. We can go over that with you offline if you'd like.
Okay. All right, we'll move into reports. We have a treasurer. Ms. Gwen is not here. Miss, we have a commissioner, Ms. Vought, who just celebrated the birthday, if I'm not mistaken. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. I know it's on everybody's mind about the real estate tickets, and I wanted to give you an update from my office about what's been going on. We had four hundred and twenty-two H credit, veterans credits, which are partial credits and full credits that had to be manually entered. Those have been done. While I was entering those, there were thirty-eight errors found on the billing of those parcels. For example, they may have supposed to have been billed three hundred thousand dollars, but the ticket was only billed for a hundred and fifty. So that had to be corrected, and then the credit had to be applied. That's been done. The last step of getting the tickets out is to get the bills mailed to the current owner, but show the January one owner. In other words, if I bought a piece of property in March from, say, you, you have to be the January one owner, but the bill has to be mailed to me. That's the last kink to get the bills out. The support team is working on that. I don't know when it'll be resolved.
Is there anybody that can provide us an update?
Todd, the IT person, is working with them. When I opened my support ticket, they closed it because they don't want two tickets open at one time. So he would be the one to tell you exactly where they are in that process.
And I talked to Todd today, and he went through exactly where you said where the status of it is, going back to vision and working with vision for the data, and I will speak out of my field here, but in vision, you've got a data field that's the current owner, and you've got a data field that shows the future owner, so the data is sitting there. It's a matter of making certain that data is coming to the Tyler thing in the bridge or whatever to update those owners, whether it's something we need to do in vision or whether that's where the conversation is going on between those now. And that's the updated, like you said, she had one ticket, and he said they have consolidated it all into one ticket, and it's been worked on.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we stay on top of it, because what we don't want to do is have to move this due day out anymore.
Kathy, have you, have you noticed any improvements with their support response?
Were you talking to Tyler?
Yes, ma'am. Because I mean, well, and it's, well, it's.
I don't want to be negative, but it's like if you beg them long enough, they'll get you off, you know what I'm saying?
We had Mr. Barrett reach out to the, to the other localities and going through some of the responses, that seemed to be a common thing.
I just feel like I have to ask, and ask, and ask, and ask, and ask, and then say, will you please? And I'll leave you alone. And then it seems like that gets.
And that also is not, I won't say, and I don't know if Mr. Smith or anybody else has any experience, but it's not uncommon in today's world to run into those problems with anything IT related.
And I know, and I understand that we're not the only person that needs the support, but it does get a little frustrating. They don't seem to understand that we need to get it done. It's just, it's difficult.
So, Mr. Barrett, how long have we had to honor?
Seventeen, yeah.
Is there a new, anything new available that's better? I mean, have we thought about that?
Not to throw Mr. Horni under the bus, but just to get this on the record, that was before everybody up here except for Mr. Horni. Nobody currently on the board, except for Mr. Horni, were here when that system was purchased.
Good to know.
I, I'm just, I'll, I'll just clear in there.
Yeah, the, um, there have not been anything that we have gone out with. I have talked to other localities. There are, there are localities that are right now implementing Tyler Munis that just went through the RFP proposal process, went through all their reviews and feel like Tyler Munis is a good project. There's one that's implementing Tyler Munis, but they are not using the tax package for Tyler Munis because they don't feel that it is a good package. They, I don't remember the company they're going with, but they are going with another company that they feel provides a better, sort of. You know, you don't have to throw everything out with Tyler Munis. There's, it's, it's modules and what you want to implement, what you want to put in. The, going back to along the lines of what Mr. Vaught is saying. The previous board of supervisors wanted one company and only one company. I argued that sometimes there's best of breed software in other things that, and, and you know, that was not agreed to. It was basically they wanted to get to one company, say you're dealing with one. And, you know, you weren't like, the problem we got with vision is, you know, you, you don't have problems communicating between the two. Now, there are, so it's one of the things that can be looked at. Going out for RFPs, reviewing proposals, talking to others and seeing if we wanted to change to a different tax module software in the process. One of the comments from one of the county administrators was that the financial package of Tyler Munis was a good package. They just do not have a good tax software package. And, and part of it is Virginia's got some weird tax regulations that go in with it that create some of the issues. So that's something we can look at doing.
And, and I would like to say, I, I think after you learn how to use the vision software that we have for real estate, it, it is a good program. It, it really is. It can do a lot of things and, and it.
And vision needs to stay.
I agree that it does.
This is more on the tax billing part of it.
And, and not to put Mr. Horni on the spot, but it was sold to the previous board as, you know, this is user friendly, this is a one-stop shop. That, that's how it was sold. And then when it come to, to actual boots on the ground, it, it wasn't like that.
No, it's not.
So, yeah.
It's not user friendly.
Well, I mean, if we wanted to continue doing this every year, it's worthwhile to look for different types of software.
Last year was with vision, I mean, we, we expected problems, more problems than what we had.
Yeah, but that was a how many year upgrade.
Right. Yeah, that was going from a handwritten David Southers program. And, and that was, for the longest time, David Southers, his program worked, but David, no offense, Mint, was our commissioner of revenue of helping to get all those books and stuff together, called it with his homemade system. But he said, the problem is, if anything ever happens to me, there's, there, there's not a whole lot of knowledge of, of programming of that.
And, and we've got a custom import out of vision that, that we worked on for months, I should, that is, is the push of a button to get the real estate information into a billing system. There, there's not really a problem with that. I mean, but all that work was worth it.
It's, it's more on just the, the Tyler Munis side of it in the operations and, you know, I, I think we, we owe it to our citizens and the commissioner and treasurer to look at what other options are available and, and if it's worth, you know, worth making the, the change over. Now, that may mean two more years of tax issues, changing over to a new system. But if it gets us to where we need to be, because we, we've, we've battled this several times.
I think we need to look at and see what's out there. I mean, it's just my opinion.
But you also know that whoever sells it to you is going to tell you it'll all work.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
It'll all work. It'll all work.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've said it multiple times, you know, software is the greatest business to be in because once somebody invests multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars into a system, they're stuck with it. Um, but.
Any other questions with real estate? It's closed.
I, I mean, I, I might just say, because she's up here, but, you know, several weeks ago, when it was, whatever, $35,000 off and those parcels off and everything else. I, I, I mean, I, I appreciate Ms. Gwen and, and Ms. Vaught's work on, working with them to determine what that was. And, and that issue, you know, with them pushing, they were able finally to resolve that I think there was a, a flag, not flagging something on vision or whatever had to update. That brought everything in balance and that's what we were trying to get to. So the, the, the holdup that we had four weeks ago when we were sitting here, they resolved all those issues, the credits all worked, all of those steps worked. The only thing is now that the new owner's part of it. And that's still a little bit of a, a vision coming over to Tyler Munis carryover that may have to be working that bridge. So I'm not trying to be overly optimistic, but I, I, even Ms. Vaught has been optimistic to me at this time. A whole lot of things worked better this year than last year in the process. But there's still, there's still some flaws and some bugs.
Well, Ms. Vaught, thank you for your work and
it's my pleasure.
31, 32 days, it's somebody else's problem. You go to work every day and you're trying to fix it, so.
Well, I, I want to get, I want to get it fixed before, I mean, I want it to be there when, when I leave. I don't want to leave it to somebody else because it has been a challenge.
Well, if you fix that problem, they may give you a retirement job. Does anybody else have anything for Ms. Vaught?
Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Sheriff Foster couldn't be here tonight, but he sent Clayton and said, Clayton, you had a five-minute speech. You want to? All right, move on to new business. We have the consent calendar that we've all received. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Right here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Next, we have abstracted votes. Mr. Lennon, I thought I seen you back there.
I'm out in the back tonight. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to come and tell you a few snippets about this election. This has probably been our most challenging election yet, even though I recall myself saying that last November, too. This was our, myself and Ms. Lester's 10th election since I've been in this role. So it don't seem like we've already got 10 under our belt, but we have. Had 7,790 voters cast votes in this election. Our early voting numbers were down considerably compared to previous years. We had about 500 less even from last year. I will say that having it in our office was a lot easier. Not, not as much running back and forth if there was an issue. And space-wise, folks coming in with this type of turnout seemed to be, to work okay, so. Uh, the total cost for this election was $24,564.65. It's up a little bit, but primarily just because of the amount of folks we had on the ballot increases the programming costs for thirty machines. We utilized 50 officers of elections for this particular one, which is about our standard number for a November election, just with the amount of laws that's gone into place. We really need at least about, about four officers at each polling place, so. Ben with the county assisted us with going out and picking everything up and, and delivering it the day before election day. So we really appreciate his work every year in helping us with that. One item that made this election particularly challenging was we, running the nut math today, we had 2,037 builds of data to enter for the election results for this election. I never thought that I was an accountant, but after this election, it really made me feel like I was an accountant trying to balance all these numbers out. As of last Wednesday, I got an email from someone in Richmond. The localities that are in our region, which pretty much spans from the city of Radford southwest all the way to Leake County. As of last Wednesday, only 79% of those counties had, had their abstracts approved. And I, and that's really got to do with the amount of data that we had to enter. It's causing those numbers, not the ballots. So I was fortunate enough to be one of those counties that did get approved. But, uh, like I said, it was definitely a lot for all of us. And, and primarily the increase with that is just because we have to report our early voting and absentee voting by precinct now, the result. So that's what's dramatically increased all of that. I believe I had one other item. And of course, if you haven't heard, we're going to be having a recount of the school board race at large, which is currently within four votes. We haven't set a date for that yet. We finally got the judges appointed that will be overseeing it. So hopefully within the next couple of days, we'll get a date set. There's technically no statutory deadline for when a recount has to occur by. But I believe everyone is on the same page to have it completed by January 1st for when the election would take office, so. Any questions from you?
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Count? I did have one and I told him I'd ask because I didn't know the answer, but with the, with the school board race that has led to the, the recount, there was a person who qualified for the ballot
Yes.
and then withdrew
Correct, yes.
after the ballots were printed.
Yeah.
Legally, or is there some type of process to post signage?
Yes, yeah, correct.
Because that was the question I got is why didn't they put up signs and said, this person's still on the ballot, but they withdrew?
Yeah, that, um, so they never officially got me the paperwork to withdraw.
Oh, okay.
Had they did, we would hang a sign at the check-in table at each precinct saying such and such withdrew from the election. As you said, they would still, of course, be on the ballot, but, um, we would have posted signs up had I received that.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Count?
I'm not sure if anybody would have read the sign.
Yeah, well, yeah, you're, you're right.
Looking at how folks, you know, mark their ballots sometimes, I kind of wonder if they read half the ballot. I don't know, so.
I would like to say thank you to whoever in the Spedwell district that wrote me in for school board. Along with Mr. Smith and Mr. Terry, both got a, a write-in as well, so. I'm sure that was Mr. Horni and his family.
Mr. Count, before you leave.
I didn't waste my vote, I can tell you that.
Before you leave, I just want to say, go Dukes.
Yeah.
Go go mauling.
They're going mauling.
Thank you, Lennon.
Mr. Chairman, historically, we've just voted to accept the abstract of votes from the electoral board?
Do we need to do that now or wait till after the recount or?
You, you can go ahead and do that. We'll, uh, submit a new abstract.
For the new, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the abstract of votes as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Right here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved. Now we'll move on to staff reports. We have Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a lot of updates for you other than what's in your, your printed packet. Did here today, we had some staff members on animal control who went to, uh, training for the, uh, cart program. Some federal and state folks were in wise, doing some training and they paid for hotel rooms and meals and for our staff to go for the, the training over a couple of days. And, uh, we were surprised, uh, Mr. Blanchard came to my office this afternoon and let me know that there was a, a door prize drawing at, uh, at the training and our staff won. And they won a backup generator for our shelter. So we're supposed to hear details on that, so, uh, pretty, pretty excited about that. We don't have a backup generator there now and, uh, could be something that if we're able to get into a new shelter over the next few years, uh, can, can go with us. So, uh, I'm pretty happy with that. Uh, one thing I would make you aware of, I have in my report that I've, uh, done required FEMA training to get us to where we can do the wireless emergency alerts that aren't just limited to what we have as far as people who are signed up in Everbridge. We could actually do the phone numbers that are within a defined area at the time of, of an emergency. We have the software to do that. I now have the training to do that. The, the things that stand in the way, we have to do a memorandum of agreement with FEMA and with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to be able to get us where we're authorized to put those alerts out. I assume that no board member has a concern with me proceeding with, uh, developing the memorandum of agreement with FEMA and VDM. And, uh, but, uh, I'll bring that to you as soon as we have it in hand, maybe as soon as your second meeting in December.
Sounds good.
It, it's a need. It's, it's something that, uh, you know, particularly with the burn ban, you know, found out just how outdated some of our caller signups are in the Everbridge system. We had a lot of numbers that couldn't be confirmed. Out of nearly 17,000 sent out, we had, uh, over 2,000 bounced back as, as not good phone numbers or, uh, having some other problem. So if we can do it through wireless emergency alerts, that gets us the ability to send out the information more timely and to, to get it to the people who need to hear it. Because there are a lot of people who haven't heard that there's a burn ban on in the county. And, uh, we, we've had still some, some continuing issues with people burning trash and burning brush. And, uh, would have been a lot handier to be able to put that out to where all cell phones would have, would have gotten that, so. Also had a meeting today. Our next generation 911, we've been talking about that for a while. The state has put it off twice now and it appears now that we are actually in line to, uh, move on with that system in, um, early 2024. We've received some of the equipment necessary to, to, uh, be able to, um, implement, implement that system. Our, our folks are developing a plan on, uh, how to make all the connections and, and make all the equipment work in, in cooperation with VDM. So, um, that's the system that will allow us to transfer cost to other 911 centers around Virginia. It'll improve our ability to receive text to 911. And there are some new features that could be included in next-gen 911. You know, the ability to send pictures and, and possibly even video at a later point. So, um, this is getting the backbone in place for us to be able to do that, so. It's a lot of changes for our 911 staff. We, we've got some coming up as we, we change the radios and the consoles over the next couple of months. But, uh, we, we have a good staff that can handle it. Be glad to answer any questions you've got about the report.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hankins? I think everybody's shocked. That's the most positive reports you've ever gave. No bad news, didn't want any money.
I, I'm sure I could dig something out the next couple of minutes if you needed me to.
Mr. Baer?
Uh, first of all, thank y'all. It's good to be back. Had to spend a few half-days of work and everything else, but it's good to be back full-time and, and good to be back at a meeting. So, uh, thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll be out of, off and on for a couple more days over the next month, I'm sure. But other than that, hopefully, uh, we'll be normal by January. Two items of requests. Number one, VNM's requested a, uh, closing of the convenience centers on, uh, December 24th for the Christmas holiday. This is the day before Christmas. I think it would be better for our centers to be closed on that day as well. And I would recommend you all's, uh, vote to approve closing the centers on the 24th and we'll relay that information through all of our social media sites.
All right. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that motion? Right here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Um, the second item, um, is a request for a vacation of right-of-way. Planning Commission staff has been working on this for, uh, for, for many months. This is in the Max Meadows, um, district. This is a portion of Clark Avenue on page 97 of your agenda. This is a portion of Clark Avenue on page ninety-seven of your agenda. Is the map that shows it. Basically, Clark Avenue is a seventy-foot-wide right-of-way from the old Max Meadows flat. The VDOT right-of-way is not that wide, and the end of VDOT maintenance is south of the house that is located within the right-of-way. The original request that came to the county was to request ending the right-of-way in state maintenance north of the house. The landowner to the west objected to that, did not want to lose state maintenance in front of her property. We worked with VDOT, or Planning Commission worked with VDOT, worked with them. Basically, all that has been vacated, and unfortunately, I wish I had a little, Martha, can you put your cursor on the little building right there, right there? All that's been vacated is basically the square or rectangle area right there. Not voting on vacating it tonight, we'd have to adopt an ordinance to vacate it, but we would need to set a public hearing. All the owners have signed for this vacation of right-of-way with the exception of one, and her letter is included in with this package. We can proceed with setting a public hearing, let everyone come and speak. I would recommend, since ordinance requires two notifications, I would recommend the December twenty-eighth, seventh, what's our date we missed, twenty-seventh, setting it for the December twenty-seventh meeting.
Don't we have a couple of public hearings already set for that date?
We have-
For the twelfth?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to set a public hearing for December the 28th, 2023.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, 2023.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
That's the only action items I have, sir.
All right, County Attorney, Mr. Farthing.
I don't have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Move to board member time, Mr. Burnett.
I'd like to thank the Police Department, everyone else involved, the Ivanhoe Parade Support. And I've been working with Mr. Bear on some recyclings, and I'd like to thank him for the extra open tops that showed up around the county, and the engineering reports that Mr. Chris did, and the other engineers. Really appreciate those, you know, because I get a lot of questions on the Foster Falls Solar Project and then Shadow Rain, you know, and that gives me a chance to be able to update them on that, so I appreciate all that. Thank you. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Cook? The only thing I have is, when you brought up the VNM recycling, it made me remember that the other day when I was out there, there was a pickup truck with a trailer full of building supplies unloading into the big green box, and it had North Carolina plates on it, so.
Okay.
Could you check with them about making sure people are with county citizens if we're going to pay for that trash?
Yes, sir. It's at Fifty-two North?
Yes. Is that all, Mr. Cook? Mr. Smith?
I got a couple things, Mr. Chairman. Good, on the Blue Sky Drive, do we have an update on that, on Mr. Hankins?
I know Mr. Blanchett has been by and has inspected. I cannot give you a resolution. I don't know if he cited the individuals, or, we had several there at the same time, and I don't want to mix up my information, so I'll check with him and send you an email about what he's done so far.
Okay. And Mr. Bear, I sent a couple of emails, if you can get me that information. And then the last thing I got is just, thank y'all for, with Landon and his group, for taking care of the lighting issues at the convenience centers. It was well-received from the attendance that was there, so, good, positive feedback, so, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And on your VDOT issues, we got an email just, I guess, I don't know, five o'clock today or something like that from VDOT that has some of the answers. We'll forward that around to everybody, and get that to you.
Thanks, sir.
All right, Mr. Horni?
I've got a five-page document here that I need to read to you of all the things that's ever been requested from me. Is that all right? I don't have anything at this time, sir.
Well, yeah, you do, Mr. Horni.
Did you find out anything on Gleaze Road?
That's what I was getting ready to add. I talked to Mr. Bear. I got another call about the Gleaze Road Bridge, and Mr. Bear's going to reach out to VDOT, and is it Mr. Schwartz?
Mr. Schwartz is the, he's the residency administrator here. Mr. Betchel is the one with the bridge division. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, in this email that we just got, VDOT has received preliminary plans, they are under review. We are anticipating a pre-advertising meeting in January for the project to be advertised for construction in April, so I'll still look at-
You're going to forward that?
Yeah.
Okay. Just as long, and the comment that I got was that they've changed course, and now they're going to replace the bridge, and it's not going to be done to 2025. And so, I just want Mr. Bear to make sure, because we hadn't heard that, and just make sure that that is not factual, so. And going back to the recycle centers, trash centers, they done good with the cardboard, but unless they've done something the past couple of days, they need to get these tires, the one in retreat is, I mean, it's four rows deep, sticking out in the path of the vehicles, so.
Yeah, four chisels the same way, Mr. Burnett.
Okay. I'd say it's probably twelve for twelve.
Yeah, so, I don't know if people are getting new tires because of winter, or they just, I don't have a field behind picking them up, but that's pretty bad, so. But that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything coming forward to board, Mr. Bear?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hankins?
No, sir.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Farthing? All right, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.